Like to call the meeting to order. There she is. Can I get a call, a roll call? The New Jersey public, open public meetings law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies in which business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place where thereof communicated the Hopewell Valley News and the Times on January 3rd, 2023. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable, Verizon Fios, and Verizon Fios. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purposes of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Please join me in, oh, sorry, roll call now.
Dr. Genovese? Dr. Lilliston?
Here.
Dr. Lou?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Dr. Resnick?
Here.
Mr. Sewicki?
Here.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Present.
Dr. Wilson?
Thank you. Now, we're going to do the flag. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion, first and a second, to approve the minutes from September 18th meeting. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Minutes approved. We're going to go ahead and move on to our student representative.
Hello, is it on?
Is it red light on?
Yeah, it's on.
Oh, okay. Now that we're halfway through October, we're almost through the first marking period at the high school. The first digital PSAT was administered successfully to the sophomores and juniors around two weeks ago. We had an activity fair in the middle of September where over 40 clubs and activities were represented. There is a celebration for the 2022 to 2023 gold team in winning the Black and Gold Cup, and we are continuing this competition this year. Last weekend, around 500 students attended the homecoming dance, and we raised around $8,000 to $9,000 for the school. The high school is on the AP honor roll based on our performance on last year's AP exams, and there are also five students who earned perfect scores on their exams, which means that they got every single question correct. We are proud of Coach Beginly, who won his 300th win as the girls varsity soccer coach. And finally, the football team, who has won every single game except for one this year, raised $1,500 for the Capital Health Center for Comprehensive Breast Cancer, or Breast Care. Thank you.
Wonderful, Hannah, thank you so much. As always, you're more than welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave if you need.
You probably have lots of work to do.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening. Just a brief president's report this evening. I simply want to say that this forum is such a valued forum for our community and our students all to participate together and to understand how the school district runs and to contribute and add their voice, your all's voice, to the conversation. I just really want to remind you that there are people watching, students watching from home as well as in the room, and we have an opportunity to model positive exchanges of information to follow the rules of decorum for a meeting, which involves three minutes at the podium, and I choose not to gavel this evening. But just a reminder that this is, you know, we are a community of people who believe in passionately in our children and in our education, and we all can have different ideas and share them. So I just, again, not, not, adults can do what adults do, but this is a forum that includes our kids. Some of our kids run our equipment in the back room, so you may not see them, they might always be in the room. So just encourage you to remember that when you step up to the podium, we're all here for the same reason, because we love our kids. And finally, I just want to, again, underscore the message that has been going out from Dr. Therese and the administration and the principals. You know, we all carry a heavy heart these last days because we are on the side of humanity as a body, and, and that's for kids all around the world, right? So Dr. Therese will, will share more, but I just want to share the voice of the board to our community that we are here together in support of each other regardless of your faith, background, or beliefs. Thank you. Dr. Therese?
Yes. Thank you, President Williams. I wanted to say a little bit more. Last week, and I wrote down my thoughts because I wanted to make sure I didn't leave anything out. Last week, when I sent a message out to the families about the wars that are occurring in the Middle East and Ukraine, at the time, I really struggled with what to say. Knowing that no matter what I said, I probably wouldn't do it well or as well as I would have liked to have done it. But there was something I did want to say and I didn't, and I'm going to take the opportunity now, and I may get other emails, and that'll be fine because it's the right thing to do. No child, no family, no one should have to endure the horrors of war. So I absolutely condemn Hamas's attack without reservation, but as a district, I hope we stand in solidarity with all families impacted by this war. I hope that we stand for our Jewish families and our Palestinian families who are infected by this war, our Ukrainian families and our Russian families on this soil and abroad that are still being affected by these wars. We don't even talk about what's going on on the continent of Africa. This unrest and this inhumanity that's happening across the world is something that is playing out in our media, and we're watching from here on this soil with not a real clear understanding of our own history and the history of other folks in other countries. But I do believe we stand with humanity. We stand with life, and no matter what the disagreement, I think we all agree that no family should be suffering and no loss of life should be happening as a result of it. And finally, I know we stand with our military families, and you have two sitting here, that worry that their children are going to be shipped off to fight in these, in these senseless wars. So, and they are senseless in that there's no reason for loss of life to be happening on, on this scale. So the issues of war and human conflict are very complex, and we know that. And we know that many of us struggle with the history, and depending on who telling it, the history shifts and moves. So what we can do as a country, what we can do as a school district, and what I'm committed to do, is I'm committed to doing our best to find the best information for our older kids and to educate them on how to have discussions around a very difficult topic so that they can understand the geopolitical ramifications of this war, and also how do we keep getting ourselves into these things year after year, century after century? And the players change, but the battles remain the same. How do we, how do we have discussions around that in a way that everyone can participate safely in that conversation? I, we're going to help you as a district, we are committed to helping your students lead those conversations and also providing you resources as parents and caregivers. And also, I, I challenge us to educate ourselves about what's going on in the world, and that means tuning into stations and channels and news that we don't normally watch, looking at international news, looking at the channels that you don't often look at, reading other folks' newspaper, and to try to get a perspective on what's going on in the world. But most importantly for our youngest little ones. And, and having, you know, been a military child that grew up on bases when things were going on, my parents were very good about, my father was drafted for the Vietnam War, and I was old enough to know he was gone and doing something. They were very good about shielding us from that in a way that, you know, we felt safe. You're safe, you in this right now moment are safe, we will keep you safe. And these are sort of ways that you can help. You can help children like yourself. So we're, we're talking in our DEI committee about ways that we can reach our young ones while keeping them safe. They don't need to know all the ins and outs of the history that's going on when they're so little, but they are hearing about these things. And how can we empower them and help them in a way at their appropriate level to feel safe and also feel like they can impact the world in, in their, in their own way? So we are committed to all of that here in the district, and I want us all to remember that as a district, and I believe that this is a Hopewell value, a Hopewell community value, there is no room ever for antisemitism, for xenophobia, for anti-Islamic sentiments in this district, in this community at all. There's other isms that I can say, right, but these are the ones I'm talking about tonight. So I'll continue our work to make sure that we are being inclusive in how we facilitate these conversations. I want to thank our social studies teachers and our supervisors who've been digging into it, and, and the members of my DEI committee who are already sending me resources. I'll be sharing a lot of these resources with you, the community, in my next update so that you can have these conversations with your childrens at home. And again, I want to thank you for listening to, to me tonight and know that I'm here for you, and I enjoy your emails. I'm meeting with some students who emailed me, and I'm so proud of them for emailing me because they're right. I should have said this in my first message to you, and I really struggle with that. And it's complicated, and if I would have sent this message out, I would have got some emails too, but this was the right message to send out. So thank you, and I want to move on because we have a lot in our schedule, but thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dr. Therese. We are going to move on to our budget presentation. As some of you may know, we are in the cycle of sharing each meeting some portion of the budget, so this evening's presentation number two, Special Ed.
Hi, everybody. I thank you for all allowing me the opportunity to share a little bit about our Pupil Service Office and, and all that we do. So everything that we do basically stems from these two, one a federal and one a state legislation that kind of guides all that we do with regard to programming and supporting students that are in need of special education. When we look at the Office of Pupil Services, some of the things that we do, we oversee preschool through age 21, special education programming, supporting students who are in district and in out-of-district placements. We also oversee the Child Study Team, which is teams throughout the, the district that basically adhere to the process of the state 6A Special Education Code with regard to testing and process and procedures for finding students eligible. We oversee nursing throughout the district. We are the liaison between school district and school physician and health department, and that involves home instruction for students who are in need of support if they are out for medical issues. We oversee counseling services, kindergarten through 12th grade. I am the district homeless liaison, so if we have families throughout the district who find themselves struggling for housing, food, shelter, whatever it might be, I provide supports and connect them to communities, connections that will help them through that period of time. And we also oversee the IDEA grant, which I'll get into in a little bit, that shows that some of the funding that we get from the federal government that supports our students. Semi is a process through Medicaid, as some of our students who receive Medicaid, we have to document for the state services such as speech, physical therapy, and occupational therapy, and we have to track that throughout the year. We also oversee the pupil service budget, extended school year for students who are found eligible and in need of that support during the summer. And I have the privilege of working with three great supervisors, our supervisor of special education at the elementary level, Dr. Hoffman, our secondary supervisor of special education, Mr. George Needham, and our supervisor of school counseling, Mr. Dan DeStefano. So I, I, today, I look every day, our numbers shift because of students who qualify for special education, students who move into our district, students who move out of our district, students who are declassified because the accommodations and remediations that we provided, they get to a point where they, they don't need special education anymore, which is quite exciting. So today, as of this morning, this was our breakdown, and we have, today, we have 784 students who are receiving special education services throughout the district. These are the classifications per the New Jersey Code where we find students eligible, and we provide them services through special education. So this is our preschool program, and in my 15 years here, I'd say over the last eight years, it has really expanded. We have preschool in all four elementary schools. We have our integrative PEACH programs throughout the, the four buildings. Our three-year-olds come in the morning, our four-year-olds come in the afternoon. Some of those students do receive special education services, and others are tuition students. We also have preschool disability classes, which I'm really excited because I think, as you know, early intervention is really important for a lot of our, our students. And we have now five preschool disabled classrooms between Hopewell Elementary School and Bear Tavern. So when we look at special education programming, we look at what's called least restrictive environment, and there are various programs that we are able to provide and offer students who qualify for special education services. So we offer kindergarten through 12th grade, in-class resource rooms, those are collaborative classes, where we have two stu-, two teachers, a general education teacher and a special education certified teacher in the classroom co-teaching. There are children in there who are receiving special education services. We also have resource room classes, which are more smaller, smaller group settings, and those are kindergarten through 12th grade, all following and adhering to the core curriculum. We have special classes throughout our district. If you look, we have five preschool classrooms at Bear Tavern. In Hopewell Elementary, we house the Language Learning Disabled Class, LLD classes, K through five. Tollgate, we have our Emotional Regulation Class, kindergarten through fifth grade. Stony Brook Elementary, we have Multi-Disabled and Autism Class, K through five. The middle school, we have the Multi-Disabled Class, Language Learning Class, and at our high school, we have Multi-Disabled Class and an Emotional Support Class that is half-day. So we're really fortunate to have a very rich programming throughout the district to support many of our learners. So I, I have this slide to kind of help all of you have an understanding that when we are looking at programming and staffing for students, I, we don't just kind of pull things out of our hat, we, we follow and adhere to, as I said, the New Jersey Code 6A. And per this code, this, I thought, would give you a greater understanding of how we staff. So if you look at, in a collaborative classroom, we can't have more than, so that's where there's two teachers, eight students with IEPs at the elementary level, 10 students with IEPs at the secondary level. And if you look at our resource rooms, per the code, we can have up to six students in there, and then when we have a seventh student move into a resource room, then we have to provide a teacher's assistant, we call them paraprofessionals here in the district. Secondary level, we can go up to nine, and then when the 10th student moves in, we have to provide a paraprofessional or teacher's aide. And then in our autism classes, because the instruction is quite intensive, we use discreet trial, applied behavioral analysis, very intensive support throughout the day. Per this code, we can have four students in there, and then an aide is required. We can't, we have to have an aide in there, but we can't have more than six children in that classroom, period. So right now, we have 36 students who, they are in need of more intensive special education programming, and we are fortunate to be in New Jersey, I've taught in several other states where they don't have specialized schools for students who just, for whatever reason, public school was too much, or they need more intensive therapeutic supports or programming, but we're fortunate that we do, so we're able to really work with our families and our children. And these are some of the names of some of the out-of-district, New Jersey Department of Ed-approved and accredited schools that we collaborate with and that our students attend. So when you look at our budget, you know, it's a large budget, and I actually was comparing the last three years is around $5 million and some change, and I think there's only been like a $1,500 to $2,000 change between the last three years. The bulk of our pupil service budget is with these out-of-district tuitions. Our IDEA grant, which is a federal grant where we receive funding, this year was $763,853. That entire amount went towards the tuitions that are listed here for our students. Some of the other areas of, of our budget that I wanted to just highlight tonight to just help you have a greater understanding of the expense, because it is, five million is a lot, but it does take quite a bit to support our students with special needs, and we do have a very rich programming for our students. If you look at the purchase professional supplies, I have one-to-one nurses, there's five students throughout our district who, because they are medically fragile, for them to, to function and be able to access learning, they need to have a one-to-one nurse. During that school day, that is our district, that is our responsibility, again, per the New Jersey Code. So those five nurses, around $475,000 for the year. Outside evaluations, again, you know, I feel very privileged to be able to work in a district such as Hopewell, because I have worked other places and in other states. Sometimes when we're doing reevaluations, or we may have a student who, you know, we're seeing things that we're not, we're not quite sure what's going on, and we need to dig deeper outside of the current, like the typical evaluations, where we will send them out to a psychiatric evaluation, or a neurological, or pediatric developmental, to just kind of help us as a team and with the family kind of unpack, you know, what's going on, what can we do to program better for the child and to support the child. And again, that is costly, but we're able to, to, to really kind of unpack what their needs are through those outside evaluations. Sports physicals falls under our budget in pupil services, so for our students who are athletes, or if they're paying for physicals, that's, that comes through. And I also oversee and work closely with our school physician, Dr. Peter Winger. The last line I have is other purchase services. I, I highlighted it because it's higher than it has been, because the last two years, we used the ESSER Grant to support our Rutgers clinician, Ms. Samantha Awadala. This school year, I worked it into our budget. So that $195,000 part of that is the support of having her with us full-time. Can you go back? So again, this was kind of, I just explained the, the mental health services and, and why that line of the budget was, was significantly higher than it has been was because we were able to absorb. And then we also had, we have, I think, two or three less students in out-of-district placements, so it kind of worked out that, you know, we were able to work it within the budget of pupil services. So that top-line OTP supplies, I wanted to highlight that because we have students who, you know, the whole purpose of the Individual, Individual Disabilities Education Act, the whole purpose of the New Jersey Code of Special Education, the reason why I sit here and our staff is here is being, being able to help, help our children access and receive the accommodations necessary to, to reach their potential. And part of that means accommodations, and we're really fortunate in being able to have our one-to-ones where students have their Chromebooks, where we can add these apps on to their Chromebooks so that they can have things read to them, so they can do speech to text, text to speech. And they've really, especially over the last five years, this, these supplies have been really important for a lot of our learners. The health supplies, again, I, we, we work closely with the nurses, and they fall under pupil services, just all the supplies, and it is, I never knew how expensive epi pens were until I, I started this position, they seem to go up every year. And purchase professionals are, if I have a speech therapist who is going out on maternity leave, or if I have an occupational therapist who needs to take a, a medical leave, typically we end up having to contract with agencies who are approved, who provide those services, and that is what that line is. And this is the best slide of all, so I just captured some pictures. I've been really fortunate to be able to, to be in a lot of schools, a lot of classrooms, and it's been really wonderful seeing the kids, so these are just some of our, our children doing great things. So that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, first of all, I want to say that I'm close to two years now that I've kind of had the privilege of learning about special ed. I guess fortunate because I never had to learn previously. And I sort of continue being super impressed with what you're able to do in this district, especially with enabling us to do things in districts and a lot of other districts. Very, very impressed, and I've heard from several guys that they're confident that this is something to be done. Questions? I just have one very quick question. Average drop number when you do have to place out of district, what's the average?
Tuition. So it's, we're looking anywhere between $65,000 and $250,000, depending on where they're placed and their needs, and the intensity of services that they may need.
I just wanted to quickly add, because you said, you know, $5 million is a lot. It's not a lot compared to the services that we have and the number of students that we have classified here, and that's a testament to your work and your team's work. A lot of these programmings we used to outsource, and that cost the district a substantial amount of money, more than it does now, and we weren't getting the service that we should have been getting. So I thank you for starting all of those programs outlets was not as long when, when you were in this position, and that's all a testament to your work and your, and your leadership team's work, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Therese.
Here, here. And I, I do want to just underscore the items where we have brought kids back, right? Can you just quantify generally over the last five years or so, how many students we've been able to bring back because of the programs?
So when I started, we had close to 70 students, so I believe we've cut it down to half, but again, I, I think, and I think most families know, we're, we're here to support children, so if, if they're finding success or they need that type of therapeutic environment, we're going to make sure, but again, we're looking at that least restrictive environment. But again, we're looking at that least restrictive environment and wanting our kids to be able to be a part of the community at large. So we've been really fortunate, and it is a testament to the leadership and the board in supporting us in our vision for supporting students with special education. So I thank you.
What you said, we had 70 students. You meant out of district.
Yeah, so when I moved into this position, I believe we had around 65, 70 students.
Okay, moving on, we are going to be having a presentation from Dr. Belitsis.
Hi, everybody. I'm here to present the annual achievement report. So during this presentation, I'm going to review the AP scores, the SAT averages, and then our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, or NJSLA assessment data. All right, so I'm going to begin with the AP scores. So the AP overview is situated around how Hopewell Valley students are performing on AP exams as compared to other students in the state. I chose to organize the presentation around that comparison, as those are the students that our students will be competing with in terms of college acceptance. So College Board offers about 38 possible AP courses. And so the courses highlighted in yellow are the courses that are not offered at Hopewell Valley. We currently offer 76% of the possible courses that College Board offers. But please note that the district will order and administer any AP exam offered by College Board for students who choose to self-study an AP course that we don't offer. Overall, colleges tend to only accept AP credit if students earn a four or a five. However, in a recent study published by College Board, it was found that students who earned a one or a two on an AP test are more likely to enroll in a four-year school, are prepared in a intro-to-college-level course, and are more likely to take future AP tests and score higher. The objective for our students is to prepare them to be at the four and five score level, but students who don't earn those scores are still being exposed to the preparation and experience. So I'd first like to talk briefly about the AP enrollment. So overall, this slide shows the most heavily prescribed to AP courses in our district. This accounts for about 50% of our AP participation. The bar graph highlights this year's test takers by demographics. So overall, the distribution is very close to last year's distribution, with 52% of the test takers being white. But in looking at the demographics a bit closer by taking the race percentage of the high school and comparing expected participation versus actual participation, it indicates that Asian and 2-plus races have a higher participation rate than expected. This participation rate was similar to the 2022 AP test takers as well. Similar breakdown by gender as last year, male and female breakdown is very similar. So in terms of trends, this graph compares the 3-plus scores of students in New Jersey versus Hopewell Valley. So overall, our students far exceed performance as compared to the New Jersey averages. But please note that the data for the 2023 was not available at the time of the presentation today. And additionally, there was a slight increase in the 3-plus scores as compared to last year's results. This is the five-year breakdown for the district in regard to the number of test takers and score breakdowns. It seems that we are trending towards more students sitting for assessments, which has been one of the district's goals, to break down barriers and more open access. The scores highlighted in the next few slides review the scores of the five most subscribed to AP exams, which account for 50% of the district's test takers. So our most prescribed AP exam was U.S. History, with 83% of our students scoring a three or higher as compared to the U.S., which is 48%, or New Jersey, which is 58%. In AP statistics, our second-most prescribed-to exam, 81% of our students scored a three or higher on the assessment as compared to 60% in the U.S. and 68% in New Jersey. AP Physics 1 is our third-most prescribed-to AP exam. 53% of our students earned a three or higher as compared to 45% in the U.S. and 48% in New Jersey. And historically nationwide, students tend to score lower on this exam. And in particular, they score the worst on the free response questions. In AP Language and Composition, which is our fourth-most prescribed-to course, 90% of students earned a three or higher as compared to 56% in the U.S. and 68% in New Jersey. And then finally, AP Government and Politics is our fifth-most prescribed-to course, and 73% of our students earned a three or higher as compared to 49% in the U.S. and 62% in New Jersey. So the remaining slides will review the other 50% of the exams. The patterns of students scoring a three or higher for the remaining courses is consistent throughout the previous 50% of the courses offered. And just to note, the numbers in blue are the New Jersey percentage of students who earn that score, while the numbers in black are the percentage of students at Hopewell Valley who earn that score. So as you can see, our numbers tend, are trending upward as compared to the states. And just to note, the classes that are highlighted in yellow are not offered at Hopewell Valley, but students self-study and sat for the exam. Some additional scores in. That's it. So in terms of continuous goals for APs, our first goal is to, you can go, is to continue access. And it seems that we are having that increase as the number of AP exams that students are sitting for is higher. Sorry, I got distracted by the bug that just flew by. Like the shadow, yeah.
Literally, it's a bug.
Yeah. And then the, we also hope to identify the types of questions and content that students are struggling with, and provide more opportunities in the classroom for exposure to those types of questions. All right, so I'd briefly like to review the SAT means for our students, along with the means for the New Jersey and the nation. So overall, we have been staying pretty consistent for the last few years in terms of our overall means in ELA and math, although we had a slight decrease from last year. In comparison, our students with, in comparing our students with other students in New Jersey, our students tend to score higher than other students in New Jersey, specifically 64 points higher in ELA and 65 points higher in math. And we are thrilled that many of our students were recognized by College Board, and hopefully some of these students will be coming to our board meeting in November. And so we had two students recognized with the National African-American Award, two students recognized with the National Hispanic Heritage Award. And as Hannah said before, we had five students who earned a perfect AP score this year. And finally, 27 of our students were recognized as commended or national merit scholars. Okay, so this, this is the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment Review, and these assessments are taken in the spring in math and ELA, and these assessments are taken by students in grades three through 11. So I'm first going to begin with the math review. So this graph shows the same grade, different students who earned a four or a five on the NJSLA by grade level in all the math courses. So as you can see, the students meeting and exceeding seem to be staying the same as compared to last year's score. However, there seemed to be some growth in grade four and grade five as compared to the 2022 scores. This graph shows the same graph, same grade, I'm sorry, different students for the last five test administrations, for students who did not meet or only partially met the expectations. And overall, the results are pretty consistent from last year. Okay, in terms of NJSLA for ELA, this graph shows the same grade, different students who earned a four or five on the NJSLA by grade level, and the students meeting and exceeding seem to be staying the same as compared to last year's score, but specifically there seems to be some growth in grades four, five, and six. This graph shows the same grade, different students for the last five test administrations who did not meet or only partially met the expectations. And overall, again, it seems to be staying pretty consistent. So just a brief overview of NJSLA review by demographics. So I'm going, I'm going to start with the math demographics. So overall, it seems that the Asian population tend to earn a four or five on the assessment compared to the other races, with this year 77% of Asian students meeting or exceeding There's no significant difference in terms of gender differences and performance, but overall, males tend to score slightly higher, and this is a general trend over the last five years. And so this shows the math, the math scores by program. And so overall, students in the various programs seem to be scoring a bit higher, earning a four or a five as compared to last year's administration. Okay, so our ELA demographic review. Again, the Asian students seem to be meeting and exceeding expectations with 85% this year. And overall, there was a trend upwards from last year in performance regardless of race. Over the last five years, it seems that females tend to generally perform better on the ELA assessment regardless of grade level. And then similar to the math, there was a trending upwards in most programs as compared to last year. So some identified trends overall is that students' performance in both ELA and math as compared to last year's NJSLA administration seems to be pretty consistent. It seems that some students in specific programs are performing better this year as compared to last year, and that overall, certain races seem to generally earn a four or five on the assessment regardless of the test year administration. Okay, so finally, a similar graphic was shown at last year's achievement report. And so as a district, we will continue to have data conversations using data protocols and technology platforms. From these conversations, we can identify specific learning needs. In order to address these needs, we have put into place some platforms and strategies as well as out-of-school support. But please note, as I mentioned at last year's achievement report, it's challenging to sometimes staff these programs, sometimes leading to limited availability. So the information gathered through these platforms and out-of-school, school year support continue to be integrated into our data conversations, and this is a continuous fluid cycle. Any questions?
I have a question. Is this, sorry, can folks hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. This was such a thorough presentation, and I really appreciate the opportunity to review in advance and to really look at this data from lots of different pools. I think one of the really helpful things that we've done here is we've broken out the data by different subgroups, including looking at free and reduced runs, which is an indicator of economic status and race and English, English as a second language learners. And so I think I just want to lift up, and you know, we did talk about this earlier, that there are some groups that appear to be, you know, experiencing greater challenges than others, both in math and in ELA. And just encourage us as a board to really be focusing in on those, both in the, you know, curriculum and program committee, but also just as we think about student achievement and where we really need to focus some of these efforts around getting these students where they need to be.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is there any, any work being done towards looking at these, this learning through sort of qualitative construct, construct-oriented kinds of interpretations?
So can you give an example?
Well, for example, English language arts is, it's, it's a vast area of communications and all sorts of different kinds of listening skills and that sort of thing. I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a great complexity of stuff just going on in ELA. And I, you know, I like your scores, ma'am, I agree with you. But I would, I would be helpful if I understood, in terms of just the underlying constructs, what's going on in these different, different aspects of learning. And I, I mean, it'd also be helpful to know what these assessments don't, don't address. So that, you know, because, you know, having been in measurement for a long time, I know that there's a, there's a vast area of learning that's not really associated or doesn't, doesn't get covered by a lot of the assessments that we use.
Well, so I think with, with your first question, those would be more, not like our standardized assessments, right? They would be more of our classroom assessments, because these are just standardized assessments based on either the standards put forth by College Board or the standards put forth by the DOE. So I think with, with your example about ELA and the construct and like with all the skills that the students would need, that would be something that the teachers and the departments would be looking at, like holistically.
Actually, I'm talking about the different instruments. I mean, yeah, it should be done and should be, should be corresponding in the, you know, all the assessments across the district. But each of these instruments have an array of different constructs on which their, their College Board or whatever, whatever organization has put them together. And I just would like to know, how are we doing in relationship or in, with respect to these different aspects of the, if not just the tests? I mean, it'd be nice to do it just with the tests, but I mean, it'd be nice to be even, even broader. But I'd like, I mean, I know that all these instruments have construct breakdowns. And I, I would like to see some kind of understanding of how our students are doing across those different, different constructs in the assessment.
Are you saying like, you know, I'm robbing one of his friends and say like, our kids perform well in this particular aspect of the test? Yeah, no, I, yeah, no, I understand. I mean, we can, like, if you were interested, like for math, for example, we have it broken down by standards and how the students performed in each standard for each grade level. But it's, that's really the only sort of, they only, they only evaluate certain components that we're given. So for math, they're only evaluating the standards, the content standards, as well as students' mathematical modeling and mathematical reasoning.
That's it?
That's it. Yeah.
Having produced those, those tests, I know that there's more, more to it than that.
That's the only data that we receive.
That's the only, that you get.
I was going to say, it sounds like limited data.
It's limited data.
And in terms of comparing it to state and national, probably is even more limited.
Correct, yeah.
But I think that's something we can more discuss in.
Yeah.
In edcom.
Sure.
Committee.
Yeah, I'm just, I would just like to know more. That's all you got, that's all you got.
Yeah.
I think they should be giving you more, and I would be happy to talk to them.
Please, because that's really all they, they give us, unfortunately.
Sure, okay. Just wondered, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about the, I understand that they have to be the only data we all can stand about. We all know that there are other schools that are critical of our, yes, that's definitely true. We, 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 I think, I feel, I know that you had shared that, that study with us about like, what do we want our students to look like in five years? And I think that's kind of would help guide what we want them to, to look like and what skill set to have. And I think that's important work, you know, as we enter our strategic plan, to figure out what, what are our goals for that.
And I liked the study you had shared. Yeah. Thank you.
Is this on? Oh, you want to go first? Go, please.
Hold on, hold on, Adam, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
I have a quick comment. It sounds a bit like a broken record, because they made it in edcom. I think they made it before, but this being a public meeting, I just want to say, I find NJSLA testing to be just the whole test in terms of both the test itself, the data that we get, and when we get it, right? So our ability to tag. NJSLA itself, right? And maybe they contribute something to the overall picture, but I, I think in terms of painting a portrait, if it was a portrait of a person, I, I consider that to be a stick figure.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, yes. Yes. Adam, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, Vicky, I had two questions in a comment. Okay, the first question was for, related to the AP. You presented data which showed, um, what I interpreted as AP participation by rate. So am I correct in thinking that means for those students who are enrolled, it's, it's the number of exams they wind up taking relative to the, to the student itself? So the way I interpreted it, it seems that even for those students who are African-American and Hispanic, even though we've got them enrolled, they're taking a lower percentage of AP exams than the other races. Is that correct?
So what I did, what I, how I looked at that was I took the percentage of the, the school population. So for example, uh, our, our white population, it's roughly like seventy percent of the school, and then I, I, I took that out of the whole, that would be eligible for, you know, out of the whole school population to come up with how many would we expect if we had that percentage, and then how, and compared it to the actual percentage, or, I'm sorry, the actual number.
Got it. So that winds up being a reflection of both the participation in the courses as well as what they're, what they're taking in exams.
Correct.
So that's a different metric. If anything, the concern I, the reason I asked the question was I would have had a bigger concern if, if, even those students from those races who are enrolled chose to, you know, we had a lower percentage actually choosing to take the exam. So, you know, so the, the other is a demographic thing. Okay, um, my comment was with regard to the SAT scores, it did seem that we have a bit of a drop the last two years. Is it possible for you to add in to that one chart which shows the five-year trend to include the state and national averages, just to see whether it's something specific to our district or whether it's a national or state trend?
Okay, that's, that's a good. Thank you.
Okay. My last question was this, um, thank you for presenting the, the NJ, NJSLA data. As, as noted, there are many other ways we break down the data in terms of our student demographics. My, my question is just a big picture question. Back in the spring when we were having the discussion about the budget and there was the, oh, the question about our, our STEM facilitators and, and where we were putting our resources for the coming year, you know, it was noted that there were some things that we saw with regard to, um, you know, these types of scores that we wanted to put our, our funds to this year to, you know, to address those specific needs. Could you, could you point, could you and Dr. Trese point to, were, were there any particular things here that stood out to you this year that made, helped, helped make that decision? The reason I ask is that some of the tendencies this year seemed to actually be a little bit of an improvement. So I was just curious to see was there some, were there some particular things that you got data for that drove that decision?
So when we were looking at our, our scores from the, the past year, we just noticed that overall, they, they were trending downwards, and I mean, that could be a, you know, a result of the pandemic, uh, but we were just overall looking at the, so we took a deeper dive into what the, how the students did on NJSLA by standard, and we identified different areas that the, that we felt that the, we needed to support them all. Like, for example, informational text, students tended to not, not score as high, and so those were kind of some of the focuses that we now have our teacher leaders working on. It was the similar for math as well, like fractions, which is tough all the time. Um, and so we're looking at the standards our students tend to do, um, struggle with that, and so, you know, we're providing additional supports there and just overall in, um, in just, you know, stronger mathematical pedagogy and, and literacy pedagogy at the elementary.
Okay, I understand. So it's not necessarily just how things worked out overall in all circumstances, sometimes it was breaking it down by specific standards and realizing that for a variety of causes we were having some, some challenges. Thank, thank you for answering the question, thank you.
Thank you.
Adam stole my question, so I don't need to ask him.
Um, question, I'm sorry. So when you're looking at, oh, it was on, there you go. When you're looking at the expected test takers and the actual test takers, are we counting individual students or, yeah, so it's not like one student taking multiple? Okay.
Anything else?
All right, thank you, Dr. Politzis. That was a, a lot to get through, so thank you, everyone, for holding attention. We are going to move past, we will come back to the presentation, um, from, regarding special opportunity for self-assessment on the Anti-Bullying Act. He's on his way, okay. Our presenter will be here shortly. So we will be moving on to public comment. So just want to remind the public of the following. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of, on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The Board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the District Administration. Public comment is now open, and.
My questions are for Dr. Politzis on the presentation that she just provided. Anyone who knows me knows I am not a standardized test guru, or do I depend on that? For me, I'm looking at this specifically, a couple of slides, from a DEI perspective. So I'm looking at the math meeting and exceeding by race, and I see that we have four categories: Asian, Black, Hispanic, and White. So I'd like to know what happened to students who don't identify as one of those four, and how is that determined? Is it self-identification by the students, or is it the district identifying? Because then when we go down to the ELA, I see that there is a fifth category there that is multiple races, and the last two years, there's no information listed there. So I'm wondering what happened to that information for the last two years? That's it.
Sorry, I have a long name. My name is Aisha Siddiqui, and I live in Hopewell Township. Today, I'd like to bring to the attention of the Board the eligibility standards for two, uh, students participating in middle and high school sports. My children are homeschooled and participate in many different sports. Last year, my daughter Hafsa Hussain was in seventh grade, and I had requested the athletic director to let her try out for the middle school soccer team. I was told then that our district doesn't allow homeschoolers who reside in the district to participate in school sports. She plays for a club travel team and at the time was busy with her season, which runs throughout the year, so it didn't make a difference. However, next fall in 2024, she'll be a freshman, and her club travel team will not be playing soccer while high school soccer is going on. That's approximately three months of no soccer, which in a teen's life is a very long time. All of her teammates, many of whom are from Hopewell Valley, will play high school soccer, and she might not get the opportunity because of our district's policy. And at the same time, my son, who is in middle school, would also like the opportunity to try out for the middle school sports team next year. I'm here to request that you consider allowing students in the district who, to participate in team sports and extracurriculars regardless of where the student receives their education. I think it's only fair to give my children the same extracurricular opportunities as other children in our district regardless of the classroom they are learning in. Hafsa is a straight A student, taking high school level classes as an eighth grader. She is self-motivated in academics and in sports. Hafsa currently plays soccer on an elite travel team and is a starting forward. She also plays for the New Jersey State Olympic Development Team, and if given a choice to try out, she would really be a true asset to the Hopewell Valley soccer team. My son Hamza Hussain is also an exceptional student and in sixth grade. As well as academics, Hamza is a travel soccer player as well as a travel hockey player. Many of his teammates will be playing middle school soccer next year and hockey once they're in high school, and we would also like to have him have the same opportunities as his teammates. Homeschooled children can comply with the guidelines set by the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association, and they can go over the same hurdles that an in-school person goes through. There shouldn't be any discrimination of students participating in extracurriculars based on the classroom. Many districts in New Jersey, especially those in our surrounding area, are allowing homeschoolers to participate in extracurriculars. Hopewell Valley should be no different in being a district that is inclusive of all students. We have an exceptional district that provides opportunities for students and, as quoted from the website, "with over eighty-two different clubs and twenty-seven varsity sports that are open to the entire student body." My children might not be confined by the walls of a school building, but they certainly are still part of this student body. I would like to see you give my children the same consideration that you give to any other student in the district, and I hope to hear from you. Thank you.
Hello? Uh, hi. Hello, my name is Hafsa Hussain, and I live in Hopewell Township. I'm currently an eighth grader, and I've been homeschooled for nine years. I've been playing soccer since I was nine years old, and I currently play on an elite team as well as the New Jersey State Olympic Development Team, and last year I was on the East Region ODP team. Needless to say, I really enjoy playing soccer. Although I wasn't able to play on the Hopewell Middle School Team, I really hope that I can try out with my other teammates, um, I can try with my older teammates, uh, to be on the Hopewell varsity team. I don't think that's fair that I'm being discriminated against just because I'm homeschooled. I'm very committed to my schoolwork. I even take high school level classes right now. I not only train for soccer with all my teams, but I also train on my own on a daily basis. I would love the opportunity to play for Hopewell Valley next year. This year, the Hopewell Valley soccer team played against many districts that did allow homeschoolers to play sports on their high school team, including Hundred and Central, Allentown, Hillsborough, North Hundred and Verhees, and others. How are these schools able to make accommodations to include all their students in their district but we can't? If we can play against homeschoolers, I think we should also be allowed to have homeschoolers on our team as well. Lastly, I was listening to the Board of Education meeting from last month, and I was intrigued by the topic of civic engagement, and that regard, I would like to use my voice and exercise my rights, and I would like for you to give me the opportunity to play on the Hopewell Valley High School Team next year. Thank you.
Hi, Mike Coco, I'm in Titusville. Good evening. I attended a seminar back in May at the New Jersey State Bar Association Conference where we discussed the new rules of HIB, uh, which is the anti-bullying law, and as you know, that the rules, the new rules increased penalties for, uh, HIB violations, including potential referral for, to criminal charges, as well as the, uh, record staying with the student throughout the entire year, throughout the entire years of their public, uh, education. And I learned that some schools allow for parents to be present when the child is meeting with the anti-bullying officer. I emailed our anti-bullying officers after the conference and asked them what the district's policy was on the presence of parents, but I received no response. I reached out to a friend of mine who happens to be a vice president and a, a vice principal at a school in New Jersey, and he said that, uh, in his school, parents are allowed to be present when the victim, victim or alleged offender is interviewed. If we don't have a policy where parents are able to be present at these interviews, then I ask that we adopt one. I know there are some time constraints for the interview process, but other districts have made this work. Nothing against our anti-bullying team, but even as adults, even adults can be led astray when questioned by a trained interrogator or investigator, which is why people are entitled to representation during questioning in law, for law enforcement purposes. This is especially true with young people. I invite all of you to learn this story about the murders at Robin Hood Hill as a sad example of this type of questioning without a parent or representative of a young person. Investigators can make mistakes and have their own unconscious biases. To mitigate against this, I ask that the district adopt a parent-present policy when, during the interview of both the alleged perpetrator or the victim during a HIB investigation. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Eileen Madecoli. I live in Hopewell Township, and I just wanted to talk about the NJSLA report that Dr. Politzis just gave us. So I noticed on there you list, um, like grade six, grade seven, and then there's an Algebra I for middle school, but I know in our middle school math program, we have kids in grade six who either get put in Math Six or Pre-Algebra. Grade seven, it could be Math Seven, Algebra A, or Algebra Seven, blah, blah, blah. So I just want to know if we've looked at those tests broken down by where the kids are in their math placement, and if that has any determination on how well they do on that test, like are we teaching more at one level than another? And also, it, the math pathway that we have in this district, it's all pretty much set right when the kid gets in sixth grade. You really have to score like a ninety-five or higher to move out of that, so it kind of sets the trajectory for these kids that they may never get exposed to calculus AP in a twelfth grade classroom. So I just wanted to hear a little bit about that. And also, when I received my scores in the mail for my children, there were three in the mail. It was math, ELA, and science. And while I was very optimistic with the scores reported for math and ELA, the science has me very concerned. I noticed our Bear, my child was at Bear Tavern. The cutoff for being proficient in the district was two hundred. Bear Tavern scored a one ninety-one, and the district as a whole had an average of two hundred. So we're just barely proficient in science at the elementary level. And in grade eight, the score was one eighty-three as an average, and the cutoff for being proficient in math is two hundred. So I want to know what the district is doing to, um, come at that data. Um, I know we paused the STEM at the elementary level last year. A lot of parents were very upset about it, myself included, and I want to know how we're addressing these gaps in our science curriculum. So thank you.
I wasn't aware that other people were going to be talking about this tonight, so I actually feel kind of lucky that I'm here. Um, I'm here tonight to talk about the current math track. In the fall of 2019, the math pathways reduced from four to three at Timberlane. This changed the trajectory of math courses for students in the class of twenty-twenty-six and younger. I had a wonderful conversation with Dr. Vicky Politzis in February. She was very understanding to my concerns and extremely helpful. At the time, I sent the following email, which she had forwarded to Dr. Trese. This week, an article was published supporting my thought process, which allowed me to realize my concern was Bear Tavern scored a one ninety-one, and the district as a whole had an average of two hundred. So we're just barely proficient in science at the elementary level. And in grade eight, the score was one eighty-three as an average, and the cutoff for being proficient in math is two hundred. So I want to know what the district is doing to, um, come at that data. Um, I know we paused the STEM at the elementary level last year. A lot of parents were very upset about it, myself included, and I want to know how we're addressing these gaps in our science curriculum. So thank you.
Uh, Jacqueline Petron, Pennington Borough. Um, I wasn't aware that other people were going to be talking about this tonight, so I actually feel kind of lucky that I'm here. Um, I'm here tonight to talk about the current math track. In the fall of two thousand nineteen, the math pathways reduced from four to three at Timberlane. This changed the trajectory of math courses for students in the class of twenty-twenty-six and younger. I had a wonderful conversation with Dr. Vicki Politzis in February. Um, she was very understanding to my concerns and extremely helpful. Um, at the time, I sent the following email, which she had forwarded to Dr. Therese. Um, this week, an article was published supporting my thought process, which allowed me to realize my concern was not subjective but objective. The title of the article was, "With Test Optional Now the Norm in College Admissions, Another Gatekeeper Rises: Calculus." As I'm sure you're aware, in fifth grade, children are given an algebra readiness exam. This exam, along with teacher recommendation, combined with their year-of-end grades and assessment, determine their math placement for TMS sixth grade. If a child scores high enough and their fifth-grade teacher rates them high enough, they are placed in Pre-Algebra. Everyone else is put into Math Six or a more basic course. In sixth grade, if a child maintains a ninety-five average in Math Six by the third marking period, they can be bumped up to Algebra A for seventh grade. If not, your course of math is set, not just for middle school, but your entire curriculum through twelfth grade, which ultimately means the child will never take calculus. Yes, I'm aware of two opportunities for students. One is to take geometry over summer, either going into ninth or tenth grade, in order to be able to take Algebra Two by sophomore year. The cost of doing this is over two thousand dollars at the Hun School, one of the approved pathways. Additional costs are losing six weeks of summer to coursework, which means less opportunities for summer job, sports, and camps, and time to be a kid. The other opportunity is to double up in geometry and Algebra Two in tenth grade. Neither choice is very appealing, especially if the district had deemed the child's not a strong enough math student to even take a single year of one of those courses at a younger age. I'm asking the district to consider new math pathways. Is there a way to test into higher math? I know some students who left for local prep's high schools were allowed to test into geometry for their freshman year. Can we reduce the ninety-five requirement? Now, I'll use my son as just an example. Um, he's currently a tenth grader. I also have a current eighth grader, and I have twins who are in second grade. My son maintained all A's through Timberlane Math. He also maintained all A's in ninth-grade Math. Um, and so I talked to Dr. Politzis because I'm very lucky that my son knows what he wants to do in college. He wants to study aeronautics and aviation, which falls under STEM, which falls under engineering. No good college is going to look at him if he doesn't have calculus. He ideally wants to go to Purdue. Um, so luckily, he's in tenth, like, tenth grade now, so we figured out that he could double up this year. So he's currently taking Honors Geometry and Accelerated Algebra Two, meaning he lost an elective, so he couldn't take Aerospace Engineering. Um, we also had to move his electives. He couldn't take AP History because he wanted to take band, so he has no study hall. Um, so I see that we're lucky because we caught it early in ninth grade, but say he decided in eleventh grade that he wanted to go into this path, he'd have absolutely no chance to take calculus. Um, I'm just hoping that maybe we can relook at this as a district so that more kids can take calculus, because prior to his year, kids could. Thank you. Oh, I have the article if anybody's interested, and also the current path, math pathways, and I also have the five electives you cannot take.
On the table, those I see, yeah.
Over here?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
I remember to grab it. Thank you.
Um, Kat Hogan, Hopewell Township. I'll probably be dividing my comments, because I imagine that they're going to go over three minutes. As the mother of a, of both a transgender and a non-binary child, and as an advocate and ally for LGBTQ+ folks, I deeply regret not being here for the last board meeting. I think it's essential that a variety of voices are represented when we discuss issues that deeply impact our LGBTQ+ youth. I think about all of the parents who are seeking safe opportunities for their children to be educated, who are fleeing states like Texas and Florida, and looking for safe haven for their family and for their children. And I worry that when they see a video where only one opinion is represented, that they make a decision that we are not an affirming or supportive school district. I've learned a lot on this journey with my children, and I extend a willingness to engage in conversation with anyone in this room, even and especially if your values are not aligned with mine. In these matters, I have chosen a path that is aligned with my belief that we are called to care for the most vulnerable among us. That applies to all manner of diversity. And I reject the notion that we lump all individuals of faith into this category of conservatism, as was done last month. My faith is centered in a theology of liberation and the assertion that the quest for freedom and justice is one that we are all called to advance. And while I would not typically introduce a narrative centered in faith in this space, I felt it necessary to correct the record and let our community know that despite those comments last month, LGBTQ+ youth are celebrated in some faith spaces and traditions. Our district works very hard to ensure the safety of our LGBTQ+ youth, and what some folks are failing to realize is that, is that these small actions save lives. These youth are more than four times as likely to commit suicide as their cis peers, not because they inherently suffer from mental illness, but rather because of bullying, intimidation, and harassment. Studies have shown that nearly half of our transgender and non-binary youth have considered suicide. Again, not because of a predisposition towards mental illness, but because as community, we fail to support them. And there's good news in the second half of my comments.
Hello, my name is Matt Carcel, and I live in Hopewell Township. I am non-binary, and my pronouns are they, then. I am also the student advisor of Spectrum, Central High School's Gender and Sexuality Alliance. I'm here today because I wanted to thank the district for being the supportive environment that I have known it to be. Thank you, Dr. Therese, for saying that we need more education and inclusion, not less. I appreciate the efforts that I have seen the district do to make its LGBTQ members feel welcome and included in school. According to GLSEN, the Gay Lesbian Straight Education Network, on their survey on improving school climate for transgender and non-binary youth, transgender and non-binary youth who had access to a Gender and Sexuality Alliance like Spectrum experienced significantly lower likelihoods of feeling unsafe about their gender and expression at school and had less incidence of missing school because of feeling unsafe. I am proud to be part of Spectrum and CHS's queer community, and I want to see it flourish. So thank you for encouraging staff, students, and families to have positive conversations about the queer community and for supporting Spectrum and allowing us to honor and celebrate the LGBTQ community throughout the year, but especially during Pride Month. It is important that students are given the opportunity to share how they would like to be addressed in the classroom, because it helps us feel respected both in school and out of school. One way that teachers can do this is through a private questionnaire, um, which can be as simple as a Google form at the beginning of the year, along with other get-to-know-you questions. It's important that LGBTQ identities are respected in the classroom, just as any other identity a person may have is to be respected. It is also important that queer students see themselves represented in school, whether that be in the books they read, the people they learn about in history class, or even the teachers teaching. It matters what students are being taught in the classroom from kindergarten through twelfth grade, because it transfers to how they act in the real world. By encouraging students to learn about diverse types of people, they will grow up to be kind and accepting of everyone, which is something I know the district values. GLSEN also states that students who attend schools that encourage positive representations of the LGBTQ community report higher rates of self-esteem and belonging, and that students' grades and educational aspirations also improve because they wanted to be at school. It is important that both teachers and students, queer and non-queer, feel comfortable having positive conversations about the LGBTQ community and that they do not have to worry about their safety in doing so. I love poetry and music. Driving makes me nervous. I love making things for people, and I love my community. I am non-binary, and I love myself regardless of what others tell me I can and cannot be. My mom said to me the other day that in her own classroom, when she seats students next to each other, she does not want them to be best friends, but she does want them to be kind to each other. All I ask is that the people in this community be kind to each other. And I know from experience that having my identity is respected and represented in the classroom matters. Thank you.
Evening, everybody. My name's Michaela Levans. I live in Titusville, New Jersey. As an immigrant who has natural-born American children, I've always been fascinated by the promise of public education in America. The promise is that all children, regardless of background, identity, socioeconomic status, all children will receive a K through twelve education for free, which is not the case across the world, as you all know. This includes kids from families that don't look like ours, whose identities might be even new to us. And here in Hopewell Valley, I'm impressed that we have so many choices. We're surrounded by some of the best private schools in the country. We have some religious schools. We have charter schools. We have co-ops. We have some friends homeschooling. But for those of us who've opted in to the Hopewell Valley School District, our mission is ambitious. We want to not just educate, but also to, to quote our mission, promote a culture of respect which values diversity. I'm glad the schools where my kids spend thirty-five-plus hours, much their chagrin, per week, can partner with me to promote a culture of respect, because our world is so diverse. I can't possibly know everything about the multiple diversities in our community. But part of our community contract as members of the same school district is a respect and value for diversity. This seems innocuous enough, but I know some identities are newer to some of the people in our neighborhood. Some of my friends don't understand what it feels like with the new language, non-binary, gender-fluid, pronouns, trans identities, et cetera. And yeah, the unknown can feel threatening to us. It might feel confusing to learn a whole new lexicon, especially when we feel like we've been trying to keep up with so much change in our world. But what does a culture of respect that values diversity mean in light of the reality of a diverse neighborhood? Could it mean having books on the public school shelves where a trans kid can see themselves? Or a kid with two moms can see their family represented? Or a kid being raised by grandma can see themselves as well? Or a kid with a physical disability? Or a kid who's unhoused? Or a girl whose parents are refugees? Or a child whose mom is from a foreign country can learn about other people that might seem dissimilar at first, but find commonality throughout? I'm grateful for the support of the public school in this joint effort to promote a culture of respect which values diversity, because I know I can't do it on my own. Some neighbors might think, "We've done a lot of work to diversify things, but these trans issues are confusing. It's just too hard." Caregivers should address these issues in the home, leave the school to teach academics. But this approach would go against our mission. We're promoting a culture of respect which values diversity. That is, our public school is committed to celebrating differences, not diminishing them. One misconception I used to have about American public schools is that maybe it's like a crock pot, but you can't set it and forget it. Thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Sylvia Kosis, and I'm from Pennington, New Jersey. I had some comments prepared for tonight, but I think, based on comments that were shared, I agree that it's important to have communication and conversation. So I'm just going to go to my second comment time. There's a policy that we have here called fifty-seven fifty-six, which is the transgender policy. And it was adopted in two thousand and sixteen. But I think we need to recognize that a lot of new information has come forward in those years. It's now two thousand and twenty-three. And so I just want to share maybe some of the things that have changed. This fall, New Jersey's chief deputy attorney general admitted in court that Policy Fifty-seven Fifty-Six is not mandatory but voluntary. Many school districts have repealed it or are reviewing it. Just, here are some of the districts. Laws against discrimination, LAD, and Title Nine do provide safeguards for protected categories. In a case, second, in a case brought to the court by Hanover Township this September, the judge stated that Policy Fifty-seven Fifty-Six violated the fundamental rights of parents to direct their upbringing and education and care of their minor children. It's part of the Fifth, the Ninth, and the Fourteenth Amendment of our Constitution. I'm here tonight to just say that parents, grandparents, guardians, caregivers, just want to be able to know what's going on in their children's lives. Number three, this is a big one, because in the last seven years, we've seen a tremendous change in how transgender students are cared for in the medical community. Many European countries have moved to what was called watchful waiting. It's an approach for gender-questioning minor children instead of the affirmation model, because this prioritizes their health care and looking for comorbidities over self-diagnosis and rapid medicalization. Policy Fifty-seven Fifty-Six, it's complex. I'm going to ask the board, you said stay engaged, you said support open dialogue, you want to make sure our voices is heard. Kat, I agree with you. I'd like to see a community-wide, in-person event this fall or winter to discuss this policy and the issues that were raised tonight. This is not a place to discuss it. So I'm going to ask you, please, be, uh, plan an event, and I would like to be involved with it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I think we are complete in terms of comments. Do you, we have a long, a long list of comments, I'm sure, and I know, Dr. Politzis, you might have some.
Dr. Politzis, do you want to speak to the questions about the NJSLA quickly? And then I'll talk, we'll both tag team on the math pathways.
Um, so to Ms. Ham, to your question, those, they're self-reporting that we receive. Um, so, uh, that's, I can't explain why there's a differentiation between the math and the ELA. It's just what we receive from, from the, the state. Um, for the science NJSLA, uh, we didn't receive those scores until later. Um, so that's why they aren't part of the presentation, and the state doesn't require us, for whatever reason, to present the science, probably because we get them later. Um, however, we are, we, we do take a look at them, and we are planning on, some of the ways to address that is, uh, we are planning on bringing back the STEM, uh, STEM Exploratory next year, which would focus on a lot of the scientific skillsets that are related, that are, are needed for, for success in STEM. Uh, we are also looking at exploring an elementary science, math, uh, science program so that it allows for it to be more consistent, um, across the four buildings.
And so in speaking to the STEM facilitators, as we had the, the discussions last year, in many meetings, we talked about the STEM facilitators. The STEM facilitators never taught STEM curriculum in the way that it's presented on the test. That wasn't their job. So it's not fair to say all the scores are low because of STEM facilitators. That's not what they were for. Uh, they were to have kids explore, get excited about STEM, mostly to get girls. They were to have kids explore, get excited about STEM, mostly to get girls excited about STEM, because we're underrepresented in the fields. But overall, children that might be messy learners to have fun and, and to really get, have fun with science. But they don't teach science in the sense that the science, the, the classroom teacher does. So we're looking at a few things. One, we brought in the instructional coaches that will help with math and science coaching and instruction in the classroom. And we know that we're all, you know, having discussions deeply about English Language Arts and the way we've taught it, you know, in the last decade or so, the models we've used to teach it. We've got new math and science, uh, uh, Language Arts standards from the state. And now we have instructional coaches who are trained to support teachers and good pedagogy in the classroom, to support math instruction and science instruction and Language Arts instruction. To answer the question about the math pathways, we are currently looking at the math pathways. We had a student who volunteered, a stat student, and one of our physics teachers, as a matter of fact, did an extensive report, and she reported out to the board just recently, because that's something the Education Program Committee's been looking at. We know that we have to address the math pathways at the, um, the middle school. There's been some shifting back and forth with that over the years, with pushing our kids too quickly in math. But now I think we've kind of blocked pathways off, and we're seeing less students in the higher-level math courses and less girls in the math courses. So we're, we're looking at all of that and how we assess students, and also opportunities for students to be able to accelerate if they need to. So all of that work is happening now. So you're preaching to the saved on that one, who, the person who made that comment. I think that was all of the, the NJSLA.
I think there was one just about how there's, there's the Math 6 NJSLA and Math 7.
Yes.
So for Math 6, the pre-algebra students and the Math 6 students take that assessment. And just, and for the Math 7 assessment, it's the Math 7 students in Algebra A. And historically, students who are in pre-algebra or the Algebra A have scored higher on those assessments.
Oh, what, top of the test?
So, one more point to make on that, and again, far from an ideal option, but there is an option for parents to wave their students into a higher-level class.
Not sixth grade, that's probably not.
Not a sixth grade, but, but it's seventh and eighth grade, that option exists. And I am.
You gotta educate, they think they're saying no.
I am concerned about the waving of the heads. Right?
Yeah.
Yes, there is a procedure for parents to wave their students, and there are caveats, and there are issues with that procedure, but I am concerned about the waving of the heads. That option is not well-known, and it is an option.
Yes, it is.
Deal with the issues that the, that the current math pathway.
Yeah, so we're not communicating that well. The only grade that you can't wave into math right now, and we'll see what that, that looks like after we do some work with math, is six. You can wave kids seven all the way to the high school. Yes. We'll talk, yeah, send us an email, we'll, yeah, send us an email and we'll, we'll talk about that. But I'm certain of that. And we were not doing a good time job advertising, if we're all shaking our heads, because that's, that's not accurate. You can wave in. So we had the homeschool question from Mrs. Zadiki. Right, that's not correctly. So the, the board did look at this policy recently, and at the time, we didn't have any evidence in Mercer County. Now, you gave me some examples tonight, and if you could please email me those. Part of the problem is, is we need to find, and we, we did look at this, we need to find other districts how they're doing this, because what, the reason why we didn't change our policy when we looked at it last year in the spring is because we're required to prove that students are eligible. And New Jersey has a very lax and liberal approach in most of the country to homeschooling. You don't have to have a curriculum, you don't have to be enrolled in a school. And so for us to prove that a student is eligible and has the grades in order to play, and what grade they're in and all of that, we need a Model 4. So if you're willing to share those examples with us, we're absolutely willing to look at it again. And it's really just us not, not sure how we would approach making sure that we follow all the stipulations of what's required for us for, for sports. Absolutely. And so your daughter, she did a phenomenal job. Mr. Coco, parent, and Mr., the Stefano's here, he's our, our district anti-bullying specialist, he's gonna present tonight. Parents can sit in on interviews with their students. That is the policy, that's written in our policy. However, they can sit in, they can't sort of assist. The student needs to be able to, you know, answer the questions and, and tell their story. And what we have to be really careful of is a parent not, not kind of guiding the student or, or kind of, you know, giving the student information and participating. But students absolutely can sit in on our interviews, and they do. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. Parents, parents of the student that's your child. Yes. Yes. Ms. Hogan, and I think the rest of them, thank you for your comments. We appreciate that, that we're supporting students, members of the LGBT community. That, that is our goal, that is our mission, and we continue to do this work because we want all of our students to feel welcome and do well here. Ms. Kosis, I'm not sure who stated that policy 5756 is not mandatory, it absolutely is. And we have to report out on it, especially, this year in particular, by the end of the month, to show that we've adopted this one in addition to a lot of other policies, to prove to the state that we are, we do have a DEI mission, a diversity, equity, and inclusion miss, mission. So that is mandatory, it has a little M by it when we receive it. So it's not an optional, um, policy at this point for the district. I think I got all of them? Did I miss anyone? Yes, great. So thank you all for all of your comments and questions.
Yes, and just one final, again, acknowledgement for our young students who spoke this evening. Really appreciate that immensely. All right, public comment is now closed. We're going to go back up in our agenda for Dan's presentation.
All right. Thank you. So each year, let's move it around. Okay, so each year, we have to self-assess our, our accordance with the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, which is set forth by the state. So I give this presentation each fall, and it's essentially just a presentation of our self-assessment scores from the prior year. So we'll get into the, the ratings. You'll see, it's broken down into several core elements. So there's several core elements of the policy and ways that we measure our accordance with it. And on the far right, you'll see a column for each building. So each building, if, we can go to the next slide. And that, so on the far right, you'll see columns for each building, and then each, each school has assessed itself in each area of the criteria. And then the, the totals for the, each section are on the bottom. The first core element, one, is the overall program that's been input in place and, and the approach that we have. And you'll see that our, our, our schools all scored in the twos and threes, three, meaning it exceeds the state's requirements. That's important to note. A two means that it meets the state's requirements. So any two or three is really what we're looking for. We can go to the next slide. Core element two, regarding trainings. So we are tasked with training all school employees, all students, all staff members and employees, includes contracted folks, it includes volunteers, it includes really, and everybody who's going to be interacting with our children in our schools. So that's the second core element there. And then the third is the different programs that we've put in place, and, and also relating to the, the trainings. The amount of time that each staff member has, has spent with the trainings, and two hours are mandatory. Not just HIB, but also suicide prevention. And that's on a five, that's on a five-year professional development cycle. So you can see each of those, each of those individual elements there. And then the D is important to note, you'll see the school safety team pop up a few times throughout. Each, each building in the district and each school building in the state of New Jersey is required to have a school safety team in place. The school safety team is the group who, who did the self-assessment scores, for one thing. They meet throughout the school year to kind of just gauge how things are going, note any trends in the building. You know, sometimes they'll discuss, like, if there's, if there's been several HIBs that were in the same location, maybe it was during recess, or maybe it was in the hallways, just noting any trends, and then kind of brainstorming what could be done in the building to address those types of things, if it's certain student groups being targeted over and over, that sort of thing. Any, any, that's the type of work that the school safety team is gonna be doing. We'll go to the next slide. See, core element four, relating to curriculum and instruction surrounding HIB. Not so much classroom, not just, I should say, classroom curriculum, but things like the Week of Respect, different programs that we put in place throughout the building to educate students on topics like this and just reinforce them. You know, again, our goal is to enforce to, enforce ideas like this throughout the school year. You know, rather than doing weeks or doing months, we try to do entire school year and weave these things in so that it's not just, you know, being highlighted in certain, certain weeks of the school year. The element five relates to the personnel in the buildings, and, you know, that the principal is appointing the anti-bullying specialists and, and that sort of thing. And then school, uh, core element six, the reporting procedure. So accordance to all of the statutes in the HIB policy put forth by the state, such as the timelines that must be followed. You know, every, we have 10 days to conduct each HIB investigation, 10 school days, I should say. So, so accordance with those, with those statutes. Next slide. And seven, again, continues with more of the specifics of the investigation criteria. So notification to parents, that sort of thing. And then HIB core element six, procedure for ensuring that staff members report. So again, this ties back to the staff training that we do, so staff members know their role and that they are required to report any incidents they see. And then part B there of, of core element eight is what we're doing right now, that the self, the self-assessment scores are conducted each year and reported to the Board of Ed. Then on the far bottom right, and on, on that next slide as well, you can see the overall scores, just tabulating all the, all the sub-scores together. Here, we can go to the next slide. And you can see the, the four-year running total. So we're typically right in that mid-70s range on the self-assessment scores, which equates to mostly threes and, and two, and some twos mixed in, which again is exceeding and, and meeting all of the expectations. Go to the next slide. So, and then just to review some things that we have in place in the district surrounding HIB, we have an anti-bullying coordinator, which is myself, and then in each building, we have at least one anti-bullying specialist. Typically, that's the school counselor. And then we have other folks in each building who have additionally been trained, such as members of our child study team. Anytime there's an investigation and a child, a student with, with an IEP is being interviewed, it's required that a, a member of the child study team be present for those interviews. So we make sure to train our child study team members. Again, we're, we're doing the annual HIB trainings for staff and students. That happens for staff, and then students, it's usually tied in with, at the high school grade-level assemblies, or, you know, same thing in the elementarys and the middle schools. District Safety Committee meetings four times a year. And then I mentioned the school safety teams that meet, meet in each building. They typically meet once per marking period, at least in each buildings, unless there's a need based on what's going on in, in the building to meet more often than that. Each school has at least one campus safety officer. I mentioned the school assemblies, we have counselors obviously on hand at all times to meet with students and parents, and, and they are typically the same ones who are conducting these HIB investigations. Peer leadership programs at the high school, and we've increased the amount of mentorship going on, where we have those high school students visiting the middle schools. And even more so, last year, high school students visiting the elementary schools to provide mentorship. We, we added a K through 12 student assistance counselor position last year, which has been really helpful in that regard, especially in terms of bringing high school students to the elementary schools and, and having that K through 12 involvement. So that's just a snapshot of, of, you know, the, the work that we're doing to support this HIB policy. That's it.
Okay, do we have any questions?
Question, maybe a comment and a question. So the first is, you know, one thing that I learned when I came here and joined the board is that HIB has a very specific definition in the state. And so I'm wondering if you could just share what that definition is, because I think it's much more specific than what we might often think of when we think of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, just to contextualize some of this for folks. And then I think the second comment I have is, it looks like we're doing well in all areas. Are there any areas, as the, as the coordinator or the leader on this, that you would really highlight as an area that we should focus in on for improvement moving forward?
I think to answer the last point, I think just the way that our children are interacting with each other and the, the level of respect that's being shown, I think these numbers, if you look at our historical numbers, and that's kind of a separate presentation I do, at another time in the school year, like, I'm noting the number of investigations, number confirmed, number not confirmed. But coming out of COVID, we saw a real spike in the number of, of HIBs overall. And I, I think that could be tied back to the effects of, of children not interacting properly for several years from, from being stuck at home. And we really saw the impact of that. You know, it was interesting to note, like, the grade levels where things were the highest. Typically, there's the, I think just generally, historically, there's more HIBs in the middle school than anywhere else, just because of the, the age of the students. When we came out of COVID, it was mainly sophomores and freshmen in the high school where the numbers were really spiking. And I think it was because those sophomores and freshmen were acting as if they were seventh and eighth graders, because that's the last time they were in school. We've seen that kind of correct itself, where, where last year, the numbers were much higher in the middle school than anywhere else, which we'd like them not to be very high anywhere, but that's, you know, I think that's one thing that I've noticed. So to answer your point, I think just working with students on respect and the way that they interact with each other. And that might be a very general answer, but I think that really is the biggest area. And can you remind me of the first piece? Oh, yes, so just.
Definition.
Yeah, so one thing I was gonna mention is that I, I would be. Why, right? I would be more than willing to have, to conduct a training, if you want to call it, but with board members, we could have, you know, a meeting just to go over this at, at greater length, you know, than, than, than this space really provides. But, you know, in general, there are three main pieces of criteria to confirm a HIB. And it's important to note that when I say confirm a HIB, I'm not, it's not that we're saying something wrong was done or something was not, or, or that the person, innocent versus guilty, right? Because the state's definition of HIB is so specific. So the three aspects really of, of HIB that it boils down to is that whatever happened, whatever transpired, must have been motivated by a distinguishing characteristic, as to quote the state law, in the, in the victim. So if one student's being a jerk to the other, for lack of a better term, you know, when I think of high school, like bullying was you got pushed into the locker. But who knows why you got pushed in the locker, right? Somebody just walked by and pushed you in the locker. For it to classify as HIB, harassment, intimidation, and bullying in the state's eyes, that push would have, have to be, would have to be because of a distinguishing characteristic, which could be race, it could be religion, it could be ethnicity. There's case law in the state where it could be lice as a distinguishing characteristic. It could be a characteristic of one of the victim's parents, maybe somebody said something about somebody's parents. That, it's really a very open-ended thing, but there has to be some motivating and characteristic. The next piece of the, of the criteria is that that action has to have a significant impact on the victim, right? So even if somebody did something which clearly satisfies that first characteristic, they are in the hall and they yell an ethnic slur at another student, like, clearly we've checked box number one. If that victim is, maybe has been going through that throughout their life, unfortunately, and maybe it doesn't have that much of effect on them, and they go about their day, then that might not qualify as a HIB. that might not qualify as a HIB in the state's eyes under the criteria. So that's, that's, that's the other, like, really, those are the two pieces that usually the investigation boils down to. A, was it based on a motivating characteristic? And B, did it have that substantial impact on the, on the education of the, of the victim in the case? And it's important to note that the, the HIB determination is 1,000% independent of this, of the code of conduct investigation, right? So we might have a situation where something clearly wrong happened, and on day one, incident happens, day one, student gets punished, maybe student gets suspended because they did something wrong. But then we have a 10-day period to investigate whether it was a case of HIB or not. So, and, you know, sometimes that's a challenging concept when we're, A, making the determination and then relaying that determination is, you know, that, that every situation where a student is done wrong by or a student is treated wrongly, doesn't qualify as, as bullying in the state's eyes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Sure.
This, I mean, this is all about process, all about how things are working. And you, you get the, we get the other one, the results later on. Now, is there any thought or any sort of connection between these processes and results? In other words, do we get a sense of, and you get the sense, I mean, there's no variability here, there's like, so I, I don't get a sense of, of whether one thing is working better than, than another, or is that a concern to you? I mean, there's different aspects of your program.
Sure.
And you, are they all, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that they're, they're all, they're targeted at certain aspects of, of HIB, or, you know, maybe the, the way that kids understand the process or whatever. Is there any, any, do you do any work towards understanding how this stuff, this, these processes have an effect on the success of kids, of, or the success of the program, or the success of the, of maybe helping kids find their way from, out of, or not into a HIB relationship or interaction?
Yeah, I think one of the main aspects of what we talked about tonight that ties into that is the training that we do with the students in each building and the education that we provide them around the, the HIB policy and what it entails. But I think the other piece is, which is larger than the HIB conversation really, is the character education that we do in the district. And that's all aimed at avoiding any situations that might qualify as a HIB.
Okay, so this is just something we do because the state tells us to do it, doesn't, isn't.
This, this report today?
Well, this report and this pro. I mean, it's not, it's not trying to affect kids' ability to interact.
The state's HIB policy?
Yeah, or that.
Can?
I, I was, I'm, I just like to see some connection between what you're doing and what results.
So to restate, just to clarify, because there's questions going around about, what I hear you asking is the correlation between behavior, student behavior, and the, the survey, basically, or does this gauge or show us that our work in this area is having an impact on student behavior? And I think you said the training is.
Yeah, I think that's the, really the only aspect of tonight's presentation that ties directly into the way we're educating our students and the way that we're working with them to avoid any HIB situations is the trainings that we do. You know, other than that, this train, this presentation really just covers our, our accordance with the state's policies that are put forth.
This is all self-reported, I mean.
Correct.
No protocol.
They give us a, they give us a rubric and then that's what the.
You apply the rubric that you're, your own stuff.
Correct.
Yeah. I'm going to ask a leading question, and again, it's just because, you know, the difference between what I've learned being on the board before I was on board, so. Here it goes for the public. If, if a, if we have a determination that there was no HIB, does that mean that there are no consequences?
No.
Thank you.
There's, there's, I think, I, I don't want to say for 1,000%, I believe there have been consequences in every single HIB investigation we've conducted since I've been a part of this, and only, I don't have the number in front of me, but I want to say 20% or so are, are confirmed HIBs. So there are always actions, consequence might be the wrong word, there are interventions put in place, right? So it might be a student who was done wrong by, wasn't determined to be HIB, but we're putting counseling in place for that student. You know, maybe we could tell that the, the other student acted insensitively, it doesn't warrant maybe code of conduct, it might warrant conduct, it might not, but we might put counseling in place with that student. So there's, there's referrals, there's interventions, and there are consequences. So I would break it up like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan, I, as you stated clearly, these, the survey or this, these results are based on a requirement for, for the state, and the questions are clear. What other work do you, or reporting do you do to help us understand those areas I think maybe Mike was getting at? This is a really nice number, but if you asked more students, those numbers might look different in terms of, do they feel safe and how do they think the HIB process goes, et cetera? So is there, are there other reports or surveys that you do with a broader group of people that might give us a different sense from the constituents, so to speak?
I think our school climate survey would, would certainly paint that picture more so than anything that we do specific to HIB policy. You know, one other presentation I do throughout the year, part of our school safety presentation is when we outline all the different programs and, you know, different programs that we have in place in the buildings, maybe speakers that we came in to, to speak with students, things we've been using in the classroom, things like that, so that's a separate presentation. But in terms of surveying, I think the school safety, or I'm sorry, the, the school climate survey would, would point towards that. It's not going to directly ask students about our HIB policy, but it'll paint the picture of how comfortable they're feeling in school, how supported they are, that sort of thing, which our HIB policy aims to support.
Thank you. Okay. So if there aren't any further questions, thank you, Dan, and we are going to have, because we're kind of out of sequence, we're going to have a public comment specifically for this presentation. So you may be excused.
Yeah. Have a seat right there in case they ask a question that we need you to help us answer.
So I'm going to read our public comment.
Now, just to, to clarify, this is only about that, and then we're going to have another opportunity for public comment. Thank you.
Just trying to find this. Oh, here it is. Members of the public are invited to address the board of, the board specifically on the HIB presentation for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comments on this matter are now open.
Kat Hogan, Tomadi Toller, Hopewell Township. I just have a question, when an investigation is escalated and law enforcement is involved, is there a cessation of the HIB investigation, or is the child expected to go through the HIB investigation as well as whatever investigation that they have to go through that involves law enforcement? And, and is there a change in terms of what you all are required to report to the state?
Kate Hamm, and I just want to make a comment. And that being in response to your presentation, I heard you offer a training session to the board members on the HIB policy and the protocols and procedures, and I believe the same should also be offered to staff, parents, and guardians as well.
Hi, I'm Mike Coco, Titusville. Just to follow up on my, my previous comment, when, when there is a HIB investigation, at what point do you contact the, the parents to give them an opportunity to come in? And what, what would happen if, you know, a parent couldn't come in right away? Would it be delayed, or would you give them opportunity to come in and, and sit during the investigation?
Okay. So I'm going to answer some of these, and Dan, you probably can tag team. For the first one, for Ms. Hogan, when there's, when we call the police and it's, it's to the point where we, the police need to be involved when we're doing these investigations, and they, they open a case, we stop our case and we document it because we have to complete it within 10 days, and we don't continue until after they're done with their investigation. And that would not, that part doesn't weigh into our decision, we still have those criteria that we have to follow with, with our work. So, and we've been in those situations, so that's how we would handle that. Is there anything you want to add to that, Dan? I think that's pretty it. And in terms of training of the staff, we do train the students, the staff, and we also offer, as a matter of fact, we recorded it, a webinar to the parents and caregivers. We had that webinar that folks attended, and we do post that on the website, I think it's still up there, but we'll make sure that we put that out to parents again, because the, the HIB law is an imperfect document, it's tough. It's not designed to determine if we're giving consequences or not, those need to be given right away. It's really to determine if our schools are safe and what the schools are doing to make sure that we don't have students being unkind to each other and interrupting their education with their behavior. So in terms of the, the parents sitting in, when a HIB investigation is started, the principal or designated reaches out to the parent and says, we're, we're opening an investigation regarding something that's a possible hit, your kid might have been an alleged victim or a perpetrator of that, and we have to investigate it. We, the parents may sit in. We like to interview the kids without parents because especially if I did something wrong, if I said something that I shouldn't have said and social media or whatever to Anita, and Anita reports that, and you're sitting there, and I think I'm going to get in trouble. Sometimes kids don't, aren't always forthcoming. So we do let parents sit in. We like us to, we like that you just let us, trust us to do the interview, but if you really insist upon sitting in, you cannot interfere with the investigation. So it's not an opportunity for the parent to kind of help the student with their memory or any of that, the student has to be able to do that. And then it's, it's tough, if you're the perpetrator, maybe you're not going to be completely forthright either. So that's always a risk. But parents, if you, you do want to sit in, we do need to, we do need to allow for that, but we also need to do it within 10 days. So the parent kind of has to get, get there so that we can move along in the investigation. We can't hold the investigation up to wait for a parent to be part of the interview. Did I leave anything out there?
No, I think that's, that's perfect. We just, like you said, it can't delay the process, we have to stick to our 10 days. If you go, if you go to the state's best practices with investigations, it is, it doesn't include involving the parents in the investigations. But we do recognize what a trying time it can be as part of an investigation for, for a family, so we want to be sensitive to that. So we allow it, but, but like Dr. Fieh said, we can't allow it to impede our accordance with the, with the timeline.
All right. Thank you. Public comment is now closed on that. Oh, okay. So I need a first and second to approve the HIB report?
Second.
No roll call. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none? Approved? Okay. Moving on to any old business items?
One.
Thanks.
All right. So just a quick context, last board meeting, Mike, Dr. Wilson, presented some thoughts and some things that we want, would like the board and the administration to do with regards to civic engagement and educating our kids about democracy. It's something that I supported, but I kind of felt like people weren't quite sure what the ask was, et cetera. So sat down with Dr. Wilson and we came up with a couple of requests that we sent to Rosetta to ask the administration, which we feel kind of walked the right boundary of what the board is supposed to do, right? And I wanted to make sure that I share it with the rest of the board, there's no action that we're going to ask to take today, but I think it's important for everyone to know what the questions that we asked. There were two requests and just, I'm just going to read off because exactly what I said. So the first one is, as part of our goal review process, we suggest creating a civic engagement district goal, which requires the district to enable our students with the skills, experiences, and knowledge that fully meets PL 2021, Chapter 185 and the related Common Core standards. And then I just realized in the email, we've added a request to that. And, and then we added a request that district performance against this goal should be regularly reviewed by appropriate committees, for example, AdCom cell committee, as part of our goal review process. The second request is a request for the district administration to enhance our existing curriculum, especially, but not necessarily limited to the areas of social sciences and civics, so as to provide our students with regular exposure to populations of their peers with significantly diverse life experiences. And that could be, you know, the lowest hanging fruit, and I don't want to say that's a low hanging fruit, but the lowest hanging fruit would be in a county. We live in a county where there are definitely kids with very different life experiences than kids in Hopewell Valley, but certainly the state and the United States, and then as a stretch role in different places in the world. An important goal of such exposure should be learning how to engage in civic discourse with people with vastly different points of view while maintaining respect for difference of opinion and focusing on the necessity of cooperation and interacting in a constructive, informed, respectful, and decisive dialogue on important issues. And then again, as far as how we're doing on this, we requested action, actions taken towards achieving this result. As we start seeing those actions being taken, should be reviewed in appropriate committees and reported to the board via such committees. That's it.
Thanks, Alex, for, and Dr. Wilson for working together on that. Any other old business? You have a.
Oh.
Yeah. Seeing no other old business item, we're going to, to approve the consent agenda item, so I need a first and a second. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? So moved? All right, we're going to move on to our committee updates. So go ahead, Alex, are you on finance?
Yeah. We're going to start with finance.
Always do.
All right. So we met last week and spent pretty much the entirety of the meeting on a readout from, from FHBD folks on the state of our.
state of our infrastructure. They provided an overview of our necessary high-cost capital projects, the timing associated with these projects, and the various options for funding these. There's a long list of things that we badly need to do, and I just noticed it wasn't on the list, but both of the bathrooms on the side are out of order.
Yes. Public service announcement really quickly about that. If you need a restroom, the women's room is down here, and the men's room's upstairs. All right? Sorry about that. Yeah, this building is struggling right now.
Yes. And it's not the only, in fact, every single building in the district is struggling in some sense. So what we discussed when we looked at this list is the importance of educating the public in Hopeful Valley on the facilities, challenging the challenges that are facing the district, and seeking community inputs so that we can make decisions on how we tackle this problem together as a community. So it's a pretty short, but kind of...
Thank you.
Not really sweet report.
Okay. We do have the...
Do you have an item, Alex? We do have an item.
Item 10?
We do have actually two items. We have some contract awards that we need to approve.
Those are done.
Oh, those are, sorry.
Just item 10?
Yes. The Safe Routes to School grant application for Hopeful Borough. So there is a resolution in support of a grant application that Hopeful Borough is doing to make things safer for our kids, and I'd like a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Before we vote, I was going to say, Mark, you brought this up. Do you have any more background about it? That's why I kept it off consent.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's been a lot of discussion in Hopeful Borough to try to bring it up to speed with pedestrian safety with relation to Pennington Borough, who does a much better job overall when you think about just what they're able to do with having their own police department in town and what have you. I've been a resident of Hopeful Borough since 2013, and this has been a topic that's been ongoing for 20 or 30 years. Committee was formed amongst a bunch of residents to essentially start looking at how to make roadway safer for pedestrians, for cyclists, and ultimately mitigate, right, the tragedy that unfortunately we have seen in Hopeful Borough over the past couple of years where folks have lost their lives being hit by vehicles. So we're fortunate enough that the council in Hopeful Borough, it looks like they have a route to be able to get some funding, which is going to do things anywhere from extending out sidewalks around turns to even potentially thinking about putting medians in the center of the roads, right? So there's more accessibility to be away from those cars, especially during the commuting times. So if that happens, it'll be step one of many, and this is just going to help out a lot. Obviously, with relation to Hopeful Elementary, there's a significant amount of work that's going to be done in and around the school that's going to have a direct impact for any of the children, any of the staff, any of the faculty that are going to be walking in. So really appreciate us getting this on the board agenda and hopefully having a positive pass.
And just to make a further comment before we vote, we did have success in the past with a Safe Routes to School grant at the middle school complex with the road, the pathway that runs through the center of those fields that provide safe access. And we are always looking to, and we can't apply for these, is my plea, and if the township wants to go back, Pennington Borough wants to go back, we will always be supportive of additional Safe Routes to School grants to aid our students. Again, we can't get them. We have to get municipalities to apply, but we'll be more than willing to participate and as we did with Hopeful, give the necessary information.
Thank you. And you're talking about if a municipality gets this grant, does it cover the full cost of the work?
It depends.
Is it a monetary award?
It depends.
I think in this particular case, and please don't hold me to this because somebody's going to, but I think the borough has to put up a certain amount of money in this particular instance, but it's not as significant as others where you have to notch it on a percent.
Yeah, so the Hopeful, the one that went across back Timberlane, we didn't pay any money towards that. We had to agree that we would maintain it after it was installed. So Hopeful Township got the money, and they also provided the labor to do the actual paving work, and then we plow it, and we're responsible for it going forward.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none? Resolution passes. Yay, Mark. All right. I am complete. Okay, moving on to EdCom. Okay, so we met last week, and Ms. Riley, the principal of Hopeful Valley Central High School, presented on just some of the grading data that she's collected over the course of the few years, as well as presented some possibilities in terms of course eligibility and the waiver process. So she's going to be coming back in January and sharing language with the committee for approval for the program of studies. And then we also just reviewed the achievement report. All right. Any questions? Excellent. Moving on to personnel.
Okay, so shorter-than-usual meeting, but a couple of things that we talked about last week, some of the personnel appointments you're going to hear about, and some of the retirements. We do have a retirement for someone who is near and dear to the district, who's been here for 35 years, that's going to be leaving. We have some new hires for nurses, transportation staff, and others. There's going to be some adjustments in salaries for some of the paraprofessionals that you're going to hear about tonight, and we have some appointments, some additional volunteers within the district additionally with the extracurricular activities. We'll have some more teacher mentors, some lunch duty advisors, and some club advisors that will be on the agenda, I believe, tonight. The last item was around the interim vice principal at Timberlane, Tammy Pegram.
Pegram.
Pegram has been selected. She holds a Bachelor of Science in Industrial Engineering from the University of Pittsburgh and a Master's degree in Industrial Design and Technology from the American College of Education. She has 21 years of experience as an educator. She is currently a sixth-grade mathematics teacher at Timberlane, and we're very, very excited for that interim appointment. So that's it on our end.
Again, before you vote, I'm going to, you didn't mention his name, but I'm going to mention his name because he'll get a kick out of it. John Agarides is the employee that's retiring after 35 years of experience. It's the only job he's ever held. He came here right after he graduated Rider College in '88, I believe it was, and he has made this his career. One of the things that a business administrator looks to is payroll, because the next thing you want to do is make sure somebody is paid incorrectly. You don't want that to happen. In the 21 years I've worked with John, we have never missed a payroll. We've never missed a deposit to the bank, which is critical to payroll. And whenever he's had a mistake, or, you know, every once in a while, there's an approval that's missed, or a person's approved for a salary that's incorrect, John has come in. Through the snow one day, he got towed in by a friend of his to make sure payroll got out. So he is dedicated to this district, and it's a sad day for my department, and the person who's going to have to replace him has awfully big shoes to fill. So...
And evidently, does she have, he or she come with her own plow?
He had a friend of his that was in the plowing business and got him to work. He drove a Camaro back then, so that wasn't going to get anywhere.
No. Oh, wow. Dearly missed. Dearly missed. Okay, so we do need to do a roll call, but I need a first and a second for all the personnel agenda items, including the extracurricular appointments.
First.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Dr. Genovacy. Dr. Lilyston.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Sewicki.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson. Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to community relations.
And...
Me.
Yes. I could, for some reason, I couldn't find you.
I'm invisible.
No.
I tried. So communications. We actually started our meeting with Dr. Treese talking about...
Can you check the mic?
Yeah, why is it not working? Try again. Okay. That's weird. The lights are on. Did we lose our system? Here. Maybe I'm not supposed to give this report? There we go. Okay. So in the communications committee, we talked about the communication that Dr. Treese had put out of round what was happening in the world, so I won't reiterate that, but we had an in-depth conversation about that. And then we also talked about the two new committees that our community has, one around drugs and alcohol, which had a great first meeting, and then the DEI committee, which also had its first meeting and set up norms and discussed some of these issues. So both of those committees have got a great start to them, and we look forward to the work that they're doing with the community over the next year. And then also, just to let you know, that last year, the superintendent coffee and chats were very well received, and we're going to be continuing them this year. Communications.
Thank you. And moving on to your second.
There we go. And look, my mic's still working. SEL committee talked a lot about the Character Strong Program, and also the SEL District Committee, they have been working on basically ramping up to assess the Character Strong Program. And so the administration is doing walkthroughs. They were at Stony Brook to observe their recess. And so we discussed that and how they basically are preparing for the assessment. They'll be doing walkthroughs, visiting six classrooms that are doing the Character Strong And that was pretty much the bulk of the SEL meeting, really talking about Character Strong kicking off, and really the great work that our district committee is doing around SEL. We've got a really great core of staff and administrators that meet every month around SEL and set the tone for the rest of the district. So they're doing great work with that. Did I miss anything?
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to policy. Adam, are you able to?
Yes, absolutely, Anita. So we've got a bit of stuff to go through. So first, I'll request a motion to move the policies and regulations up for first reading, please. Okay, we've got quite a list here. Let's see. For first reading, we've got Policy and Regulation 2423, bilingual and ESL education. We've got Policy and Regulation 2461, covering special education receiving schools. We've got Policy 6115.01, which covers federal awards for funds and internal controls, allowable ability of costs. We've got Policy 6115.04, federal funds duplication of benefits. We've got Policy 4217, use of corporal punishment. And we also have Policy 6311, contracts for goods or services funded by federal grants. So a variety of items, just a couple of things to note. A number of these were new policies and regulations that the state has put out that were required to adopt, especially those related to receipt of federal funds, basically making sure we have mechanisms in place to make sure we're not duplicating needs, you know, receiving those funds when we already have access to funds allocated for a certain project. With regard to the special education receiving schools, that is a revision, and it's mainly focused upon the need for us to make sure that when we send students out for special education services, that we ensure that the teachers educating those students hold the appropriate certifications to do so. So there's language going in there to help strengthen our need to go ahead and do that. The ones with regard to, let's see, bilingual and ESL education, those we needed to adopt, the main thing I would note there is we wound up making a modification to that policy and regulation, just because there is going to be coming down the line, some future revisions to these. We just needed to get these on the books now. The one thing we wound up doing was changing some terminology. We know that eventually the state is migrating to the use of the term multi-language learner to describe students whose native language is other than English, who have different degrees of English/English proficiency, you know, in regard to speaking, writing, et cetera. So we did wind up making that change. The one other thing I'll point out with regard to, we did have to adopt a policy on use of corporal punishment. The key in there is that we're noting that corporal punishment is not something we do. The policy does wind up defining those particular cases when a staff member may need to use force. For example, when a student is threatening injury to others, you know, when a weapon is present, things of that nature. It defines some very specific cases there. So again, you know, it's not, there's no use of corporal punishment or punishment, you know, in and of itself. So that's what we have. So again, you know, these are up first reading, and, you know, if there's any questions, please ask them now. If not, Bob, we can go ahead to just a voice vote.
Questions?
Yeah, I feel, I feel, I'm glad we're down. But I had a question about ESL. I'm kind of went into those.
You're in my heart. What I didn't see in the language around this structure, like subjects of education. On, of, of students who are being accepted, like, you know, for high school subjects, like, and how that's handled in the community.
What I would suggest is, as Adam shared, there are going to be extensive changes, according to Lois Baldwin, our supervisor, to these policies and regulations. So let's wait and see what they come up with in the spring, because we're going to have to come back to these. They're going to, and then you can always add. You can't take anything away from them, but if we want to add specific language around that as a board, we can certainly do that. But let's see, because they're trying to come with, they're trying to enhance these because they know that they're lacking, but I don't know that they're going to put anything there. So there'll be an opportunity for that, and we will run this through EdCom in addition to policy because this is one that programming is involved with. And for now, we don't have enough students to qualify for bilingual ed, but we definitely have a small ESL program, and we can get that update as well. So Lois will bring that all to us, and that'll help inform how we approach this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none?
Okay, uh, next up, we have, uh, a policy and regulation up for second reading. So, can I get a motion to move those, please? Great. Uh, what we have is Policy and Regulation 3126, District Mentoring Program. This basically defines the requirements and, uh, means by which, uh, the district, the, the, the district goes ahead and has, um, its more experienced educators mentor, uh, its younger educators in the art of, uh, instruction. So, uh, these, these were up for first reading last month. Uh, I don't recall, um, hearing of any requested changes to these. So, uh, again, we're, we're moving them for second reading for, for them to be approved. And this would be a roll call vote.
Any questions? Seeing none?
Dr. Liliston. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Dr. Resnick?
Yep.
Mr. Sewicki?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Dr. Genovacy? Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the last thing we have is the abolishment of, um, two items. The first is, uh, there are two policies. The first is Policy 2421, which is Vocational Technical Education. And the second is Policy 2415.01, Academic Standards, Academic Assessments, and Accountability. And what I can say with regard to this, and this is, um, what's come down through the Department of Education, through our policy service, we are not eliminating, uh, our needs to, you know, what we do in terms of vocational technical education. Uh, we're certainly not getting rid of academic assessments or accountability. It's just the content within these policies is now being taken, uh, taken up within, uh, alternative means, alternative policies and regulations. So, these two are, are just being abolished because of redundancy. So, again, this would be a roll call vote.
First and second. Motion.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Dr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Sewicki?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Dr. Genovacy?
Yes.
Dr. Liliston?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you, Adam. Moving on to, uh, we need to have a first and second to approve the calendars for October and November.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, so on the books right now, we have the SEL Committee slated for November 9th at 10:00 a.m. They're, they're always ahead of us. Um, and the Personnel Committee will be 11:13, November 13th, at 6:15 p.m. As well.
No, again, the ninth was, uh, was, was conference. Is that a problem?
Hmm.
So, since we have that meeting, do we want to put the, um, do we always have the Community Relations Meeting? Follow or proceed that? Do we want to do that again?
Works. Nine or 11? Same.
On the ninth.
Nine a.m.
Nine.
For Ed programs, could we do either the sixth or the seventh? I'm available at 6:00 p.m. and would be there during then.
11:06 at 6:00?
11:06 at 6:00, does that work?
Sounds good.
EdCom?
And I guess we'll piggyback on that. We'll go 11:06 at 5:00. Adam, does that work for you?
You might have lost him.
Adam?
Oh, sorry, what was the date, Bob? I'm sorry, I missed the date.
The sixth.
11:06 at 5:00.
That's perfect.
Okay. And policies last, but not least.
Is it, um...
I would be targeting the third, November 3rd. You guys should like to go the week before.
So, I'm just looking at, uh, November 3rd is, is not going to work for me because I'm out of town. So, I'd have to go into the, um, to the week before or the week after.
Second and seven?
I'm out of town the second and the third.
Oh, second and third, I'm sorry.
So, I can do the first.
What about the...
That would work for me, Rosetta.
Any time in particular?
Nine.
What time were you thinking, Rosetta?
Um, it's up to you. I can do nine, I can do 10.
Earlier?
Nine works for me. If that works for anyone else.
Okay.
The policy is on November 3rd.
13th.
The 13th. Okay. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion passes. Moving into our final comment, public comment for this evening. Members of the public are invited to address the Board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the Superintendent to do so. The Board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the District Administration. Public comments are now open.
Hi, Coco Titus Phil. The year 1891 saw the largest mass lynching in U.S. history, where at least 16 Italian-Americans were murdered in New Orleans. The Italians were regarded by the former Louisiana governor as, and I'm paraphrasing, "just a little worse than black people, but filthier." And he didn't put it so politely as I do here today. In response to this tragedy, President Harrison created Columbus Day in celebration of Italian immigrants and immigrants in general. I was shocked to see that the school district has completely eliminated Columbus Day, a state and federal holiday, and replaced it with a day that is neither. There is no mention of Columbus on the school calendar, nor the website, and my children say that there was no mention of the holiday in school at all, instead saying that the teachers head off for conferences. I'm not here to debate the morals of a man who lived over 500 years ago. But for a district that prides itself on diversity and inclusion to supplant a statutory holiday dedicated to Italian-Americans with one that is not recognized in any official legislative capacity is simply mean-spirited, discriminatory, and offensive. Is this how it's going to be in our district? No desk for the dago? Would we suffer the total replacement of Martin Luther King Day with an Anglo-American Day or a Mexican-American Day? The district can celebrate Indigenous Persons Day on any other day of the year, but instead, it chose to replace an internationally-recognized celebration of one nationality with that of another. Italian-Americans were viewed as inferior under Jim Crow, then as mobsters in popular culture, then as genocidal conquistadors in universities, and now, we are regarded as nothing at all. I have some legal arguments here, but I'll save them if it comes to that. For now, I'm asking as a parent, as a resident, and an Italian to please respect our heritage as you would like your heritage respected and restore this holiday to the district. Thank you.
Kate Hamm-Pennington. I'd first like to respond to Dr. Pulitz's remarks regarding her presentation. I can assure you that at least one student is not represented in your bar charts as they pertain to racial denotation. I had not intended to speak tonight on this subject this evening, but hearing yet another experience brought me to publicly speak this evening. My family does not have a lengthy history here in a K-12 education here in Hopewell. I'm not a family with connections here in Hopewell. And as I've previously shared with you all, in my first year here, I uncovered a lot of hidden truths as I learned about activities, events that were school-specific. There seemed to be more open dialogue about public school issues at some schools than at others. Parent and school relationships were supported more in some buildings than in others. I approached the previous Superintendent about the need for better communication amongst this community as it was evident that information was available to some, but not to all. It was falling through the cracks. Thus, the Key Communicators Committee was created. Tonight, I saw yet again two instances where the same remains. Parents are uninformed about the pathways for math placements and the invitation for parents to be present when their student is being interviewed as part of a HIB investigation. These are the only ones that have come to light here tonight, but I'm certain that, I'm certain that more exist. It's imperative that communication in this district is present and effective. Parents and guardians deserve transparency and information to work collaboratively with the district and the community for the betterment of everyone.
Kat Hogan, Hopewell Township. I just want to finish up my comments, um, from earlier. Studies have shown that nearly half of transgender and non-binary youth have considered suicide. Again, not because of a predisposition towards mental illness, but because as a community, we felt to support them. But, and here is the good news that I promised, they are 26% less likely to consider suicide when they are in affirming schools. So, some of the things that MAC shared about so beautifully earlier, learning inclusive history, respecting pronouns, access to gender-neutral bathrooms, and access to supportive affinity groups and clubs. These things may make some of us uncomfortable, but if you are truly concerned about suicide prevention and addressing mental health issues, as was expressed repeatedly at the last board meeting, then let us all get a little uncomfortable and save some lives. An organization I serve hosts an annual session in partnership with the school district that offers education and resources for parents, teachers, administrators, mental health professionals, and other community stakeholders. Please stay tuned. It's an excellent time to gain a better understanding of the issues faced by our LGBTQ+ youth and why support and affirmation are so incredibly impactful. And when I share my concern, I sat in on our DEI strategic plan that we cracked, and I was one of the five parents who got to be a part of that process. And one of the things that we identified as a threat to this work is our lack of diversity in this community. And one of the things that came out of that session, which was really crucial, was that we spend a lot of time being concerned about what we look like from the inside and less concerned about what we look like from the outside. Well, friends, what we look like to the outside does matter because if we see the lack of diversity as a threat, it's not going to come if we don't look like we welcome it on the outside. And so, when we have board meetings and we have one idea or one view or one set of values represented, and parents who are seeking, and I'm going to tell you right now, I know parents are seeking because I've gotten, in the past several months, at least three phone calls from parents seeking resources because they left states like Florida and they left states like, uh, Georgia, and they've come to our community and they're seeking support. And now, what are they thinking? Because they heard one viewpoint, one viewpoint. I will forever kick myself for not being at that meeting, but trust. I'll be here from now on.
Hi, Sylvia Kosis, Pennington. I tried to just, again, ask the Board if... I know that you mentioned at the last meeting, um, that you encourage parents to stay engaged. You support open dialogue and want to make sure that all voices are heard. So, I would suggest, and especially after tonight's meeting, that this might be a topic for one of the chats. It's an important one. There's data on information on both sides, which is important for everybody to hear. And the board meeting is not probably the best place to do it. Gender identity theory posits that we all have an invisible gender identity within us and that some of us have been born in a male or female body that is not matched to our gender identity. But there are others that don't subscribe to this belief and consider themselves perhaps, uh, gender-critical, okay? And it all revolves around what is the best health initiatives and ideas and medical care that we can have for our children and our grandchildren. It's not about bias, it's not about hatred, it's not about any of that. It's seeking to find the facts and the truth. All of these theories have a right to be heard, studied, and debated in academic settings or in chats. The dangers emerge when unproven academic theories enter public institutions and begin to operate as guiding principles for a range of vital decisions that impact the lives of young people. This might have occurred with this concept of gender identity, which is now unduly influencing key policies from law and education to healthcare. So, we need to discuss this, and I ask the Board, please, have a chat. Allow people from all different positions to be involved in the planning of that chat and in the, in the process of, of doing that type of a community-wide event that will get a lot of publicity and, and people come out to be able to express their opinions. We need to be fair, we need to be balanced, and we need to be unbiased and hear all points of view. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay. Any of those you'd like to take on?
Um, so, um, first, Mr. Coco, I appreciate your, your comments. And our kids do actually have a, a actual discussion around Columbus Day versus Indigenous People Day. They dig into the history using primary and secondary sources of what occurred at the high school, and, and I think in grade, fourth grade, they do look at that at some point. The discussion that we have around that, though, um, is really looking at the sources from the date. And, and as a matter of fact, the Coalition of Native Allies came and spoke to our ninth-grade class about this in particular, and they were looking at these sources. And they spoke specifically to what you shared today, which is a little-known fact of where the origins of Columbus Day comes from. That naming after, um, the killing of, of, of those, those Italian people, those Italian men. She talked about that specifically, um, one of the Allies, around her, her husband, who, this woman is this Native American, her husband's Italian, and him telling her that history. And she goes, "Are you aware that, at, at the same time that occurred, where that day was awarded to Italians, um, there were over 30 indigenous people that were hung in, in Oklahoma at the same time?" So, this country does not have a good history around dealing with folks when they come here. They don't. They don't do well with folks as they come here. And there's a long history of the, the, um, the discrimination that occurred to the Irish, to the Catholic, to the Italians, to everyone as they came over. And then enslaved Africans, right? And at some point, folks were able to assimilate and blend and change their names and do some things, or didn't. Except, you know, we, we didn't quite blend. But there, there, that history exists in this country where every time somebody came, there was this, this backlash. So, we talked about that. And we also talked about the time that Columbus was living in and that some of the atrocities that he did throughout the, throughout, um, the islands and here and, and, um, what is going to become the United States of America. And so, we have a debate on what, how you fix that, how you talk about that. You can't not talk about Columbus because he also, him coming here made history too. They brought people here that were not here before. So, we have to talk about that, and he's not being erased. And we also have to recognize that, is that something we can just celebrate blindly anymore while we're teaching that history? So, the kids talked about, is there an opportunity to maybe make it Italian? So the kids talked about, is there an opportunity to maybe make it Italian People's Heritage Day, instead of naming it after somebody who's so problematic? So we have those discussions, and we certainly can't erase Columbus's work, but we have to be realistic with what he did. As an individual, he did do some great stuff. So we do have all those discussions, and we haven't stricken it from the record at all, but we're hoping that as we educate and we grow in learning the real history of what's going on in this country and elsewhere, that we make changes in the future. And some of those changes are going to be hard, because these are traditions, but I think the reason why we hold on to them so tightly is because we don't know the whole history. So we're working on that. So Ms. Hamm, again, hopefully we communicate, and we communicate a lot. I know that I myself have a lot of these webinars and meetings, and we record them and we post them. People are busy, they miss things, so we'll continue to do our best to try to keep information out there. I think part of the problem is we inundate you with information. We constantly are sending some sort of newsletter, or flash, or something. But we'll continue to strive and try to make sure that we get messages out to the community, and when we find that people are missing things, we'll double down on that communication. And then finally, to Mrs. Kosis, I know, I hear your request, but I also want to be very careful to create a forum where there's a debate that's not healthy for our students and members of our LGBT community or others, because there is no other side to somebody's identity. That's not something that's debatable. How we address and teach and make sure people feel comfortable, we certainly can discuss, but I'll talk, we'll talk about this in Community Relations, but we can't create a place where people are at odds and fighting over something that you really can't debate whether somebody, how somebody identifies. That's not a debate. So we'll work on that and see how we can do this in a way that's safe and doesn't create an opportunity for conflict and trauma.
Does anybody else have any comment? Okay. So public comment is now closed. Moving on to any new business items. Seeing none, we are going to go into executive session. So any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations, which the public body is or may become a party in any matter falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required to preserve the attorney-client relationship, we will be discussing HIB matters as well as an ethics complaint. No action will be taken. So, motion and second to move into executive section.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? So moved. We are now at, thank you all for joining us this evening.